A firefighter and a police officer, Mackenzie Vaughn. And she was just sworn in last week. A very tough young lady. Fought a terrible battle. And I'd just like to take a moment of silence for her because she knows she's in a better place now and God bless her and her family. It was a blessing for us to have her. Appreciate both chiefs for helping us make her her day that last bit more special than she's been known for her short five years. Pledge of allegiance.
If you would, come up, speak at the microphone. Make sure that it's on. Make sure that we're within about two inches of the microphone if you could. And with that, roll call.
Counselor Shalata.
Here.
Zadi.
Here.
Demas.
Here.
Tate.
Here.
Windor.
Here.
Alter.
Here.
West.
Here.
Savage.
Here.
Mayor Como.
Here. Counselors, first item of business, we have the approval of the minutes from the city council meeting of August 20th, 2019. What's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman Shalata.
I move to approve those minutes on August 20th, 2019.
You have a motion to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Been called all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, this is going to bring us to the bid openings section of our agenda. And we're actually receiving bids for Streets Truck and Sander. And we're pretty sure they put the truck in this box.
We do have a bid bond attached. Total bid for this truck, sander combination, $205,125. Two hundred and five thousand, one twenty-five. Bid bond is attached. Total bid, one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, four fifty-six, forty-six cents. One ninety-seven, four fifty-six, and forty-six cents. These bids will be turned over to Department of Engineering and the Streets Department for review and recommendation. Counsel is going to bring us to our appointment section of our agenda. And Mr. President, members of the council, I submit the name of Ronnie Warren to serve second term on the Board of Adjustments.
Counsel, Ronnie Warren has stepped up again to serve on Board of Adjustment. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Counselor Zadi.
Yes.
Demas.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Windor.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Mayor Como, you have your appointment.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Mr. President, members of the council, I submit to you the name of Jim Blazovich to serve as an alternate member on the Board of Adjustments first term.
Counsel, Jim Blazovich has stepped up to serve as an alternate on Board of Adjustment. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Tate. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Shalata, thank you. Roll call, please. Counselor Demas.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Windor.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Mayor Como, you have your appointment.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Just going to move us on to the Presentations and Proclamations section of our agenda. And a more positive note, it's my honor to be able to speak a bit about Battalion Chief Scott Paulson sitting in the back. I've known Scott for a long time, very dedicated person, known not only as a firefighter, but as a husband and as a dad, right, Drew? And give you a little bit of information on what Scott just went through and achieved. And that's becoming, we heard of CFOs, I believe this is EFO, an Executive Fire Officer Certificate. And just to summarize the program that Battalion Chief Paulson went through, first year, let me give you an idea. Executive Development is foundational course for the Executive Fire Officer EFO Program. Ten-day course intended to provide a framework in which leadership is a process whereby you and others perform adaptive work. So with that, the major goals are to improve the executive fire officer's ability to build high-performance teams, exercise adaptive leadership skills, and manage change, value diversity as a fire service resource, use critical thinking skills to develop applied research projects. And the curriculum included self and observer-based survey assessment instruments, case study analysis, and an adaptive challenge consult, experiential activities. And this course was delivered at a graduate level using critical inquiry and Socratic dialogue. His first year, he submitted his applied research paper titled "Clandesine Labs Are We Safe?", 2015, thinking in 2015 maybe, say what. That was probably a very good topic. We'd like to say we're above that, but we never are. Second year, Executive Analysis of Community Risk Reduction. This ten-day course is the second course in the Executive Fire Officer Program. The course is a mixture of philosophy and application, the value of the community risk reduction, and the process of applying risk reduction to the community. It involves developing partnerships with the community to implement programs, initiatives, and services that prevent and/or mitigate the risk of human cause or natural disasters. Traditional fire prevention programs are addressed. There's an extensive pre-course assignment in which students are required to research the history of fire prevention and its evolution into community risk reduction. Students build a demographic and risk profile of their home community and examine social, culture, economic, and environmental trends that impact community risk. The course examines the EFO as a community risk reduction leader, assesses community risk, develops a draft plan for local risk reduction initiatives, applies change management models, and addresses organizational and community politics. The ultimate goal of the course is to develop the fire service leaders who are committed inward and deep to comprehensive, multi-hazard community risk reduction. So year two, his applied research paper was determining a need for home safety surveys in the city of Rock Springs, 2016. Year three, Executive Analysis of Fire Service Operations and Emergency Management. This ten-day course is the third course in the Executive Fire Officer Program. The course is designed to enable students to better prepare their communities for large-scale, multi-agency, all-hazard incidents. Students analyze emergency incidents and identify lessons learned and best practices to better prepare for the future incidents. Students are introduced to emergency management and the workings of an emergency operations center as a framework for their analysis. Some of the areas covered in the course are risk assessment, incident documentation, standards and legal mandates, capability assessment, damage assessments, multi-agency coordination systems, including the EOC, the subject matter's comprehensive maximum use of the student's time, which is required. And throughout the course, students are presented with a series of senior staff-level issues that require extensive analysis. The decisions made are applied to a mock community in order to evaluate the effectiveness of these decisions relative to the fire and rescue department's operational readiness during major incidents such as floods, tornadoes, earthquakes, and hurricanes. This course is very intense and uses lecture, analysis of documented emergency incidents after action reports, and student participation using TED Talks as introductory media. Year three, Scott's applied research paper titled "Analysis of Rock Springs Fire Department Deployment Model", 2017. Fourth year, Executive Leadership. This capstone ten-day course of the Executive Fire Officer Program was designed specifically to provide a framework of executive-level competencies by focusing primarily on issues and areas of personal effectiveness. The curriculum includes self and observer-based, multi-rater assessment instruments, case study analysis, role-playing, and adaptive problem consult, experiential activities, and a staff ride. Participants complete a personnel plan, a personal plan to access currency and then create goals in four areas of their professional, personal, community, and family life. Examples of the course units include purpose and integrity, decision-making and thinking systematically and politically, that's got to be a challenge, giving and using feedback and developing self-to-exercise leadership, politics and public policy, storytelling, influence and persuasion in negotiation, and exercising leadership practicum, managing multiple roles, taking risks, being in transition, and staying alive. Students also participate in a staff ride to the Gettysburg National Military Park. Fourth year, applied research paper titled "Feasibility of Establishing a Fire Science Program at Western Wyoming Community College", 2019. And Scott, it's my honor to tell you what a job well done. This is a big thing, and we're proud of you. And we're proud of your family, Kendra and Drew. Are you here? You gonna come take a picture? And forgiving your dad the time to better himself and be somebody that we can depend on in times of need. You've been a dedicated firefighter, a husband, and a dad. Your leadership does not go without notice. And I'm honored on behalf of myself and the city council to honor you and present you with your Executive Fire Officer Certificate. Congratulations. So with that, I just have to read this. United States Fire Administration, National Fire Academy, in recognition of successful completion of the requisite courses of study and applied research projects, the National Fire Academy under the authority granted by the 116th Congress of the United States of America, and on recommendation of the faculty confers the title of Executive Fire Officer upon Scott Bradley Paulson, with all honors, privileges, and responsibilities thereunto pertaining, awarded this 14th day of May, 2019 by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. And Chief Wamsley, thank you so much for your help in gathering information. Well done. You want to give a speech, Scott? Well, we appreciate everybody for coming down and well done. Item number two, the Sweetwater Regional Cancer Center. Eva Wassin, Kelly Sugihara, I might jack your name up. Okay, Paint the Town Pink and Ladies Night Out event for breast cancer awareness. It's all yours.
All right. So my name is Eva Wassin, and I am, no, I'm sorry. So I'll start over. My name is Eva Wassin. I'm the radiation oncology nurse up at the hospital and at the Sweetwater Cancer Center. I have two incredible ladies with me tonight. This is Tasha Harris. She's the director, our director of the cancer center. Not only that, keeping us in line and organized, and everybody working well and doing an outstanding job, she's also a contributor to our team, and she's the dosimetrist there. So she helps to make the radiation plans for a lot of our patients. And she fills in on the machine and does treatments of patients on a daily basis when we need it. So she does a lot of things for our cancer center, and we really appreciate her. We wouldn't be who we are without her. And she's been here since the very beginning, when we opened in 2014. And the other lady that I have here is Kelly Sugihara. We applied for a grant last year from the Wyoming Cancer Resource Services, the state of Wyoming, to get her in here to help us with resources that are available to our community and to all of Region Five, which includes five different counties.
Sweetwater, Sublet, Teetown, Lincoln, and New England.
So she's a very valuable part of our cancer center, and she's here for patients who may not have insurance or the means to get screened for certain types of cancer. And so we want the community to know that. And as much as we are proud to have this cancer center here locally and be able to treat patients locally for cancer, we really would like it more if less people had cancer in this community. So one of the things that we're pretty passionate about is going out into the community and letting people know how they can prevent themselves from getting cancer and how they can be screened so that we can catch cancer early and actually treat it better and more effectively, and people can have longer, healthier lives. So one of the things that we're here tonight to do is to let you know that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And so we met with Mayor Como in February, and he suggested that we come and speak with you to see if we can get you involved with an event that we received a grant to put on next month. So we, as a cancer center, are organizing and trying to get an event together called Paint the Town Pink. And in October, because it is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we are going to be encouraging businesses to decorate their storefronts in pink with either lights or some kind of decoration, just to draw awareness for breast cancer, for survivors, and for people who might be fighting breast cancer right now. We just want to draw attention to that and to maybe have people asking questions about, you know, what do I need to do to get screened, or how do I prevent myself from getting this disease? And so we really would like to present information to people in a way that's fun and in a way that is maybe some information they haven't heard before, not something that we all hear all the time, you know? People say, awareness, what is that? Well, that means that you know something about the disease that you didn't know before or that you're aware that it exists and that there are ways to prevent it and to get screened for it. So in keeping with that, we're also going to hold a Ladies Night Out on October the 5th, which is a Saturday night over at the Bunning Freight Station. And all women in the community are invited to this event. It's free of charge for women who want to come. We're going to have a speaker there that's going to speak about unmasking breast cancer. The theme of it is a masquerade party. So we're asking people to possibly dress in period dress, medieval Renaissance kind of period dress, come in a mask. And it's kind of mysterious right around Halloween. So we want it to be a lot of fun. There'll be food, and there'll be, Western Wyoming Community College is going to come and help us to teach people a little dance that they used to do in the medieval period of time. And we're going to have games so that people can learn a little bit about breast cancer and screening and prevention. And then they can earn raffle tickets so that they can win prizes at this event, too. So we just want it to be, like I said, a fun event so that the community wants to come, women and men can come if they want to. And we'd like to have the community, encourage the community to participate as well. And so Kelly and I are going to take to the streets and invite some of the businesses in Green River and in Rock Springs to decorate their businesses. And so we're here tonight because we would like to ask the city of Rock Springs to possibly decorate some part of Rock Springs so that people can see it and be aware that this is going on. And we've also approached Green River and asked them if they would also decorate some part of their city in recognition of this. So we're here to ask for that. And then we're also here to see if you might be willing to make a proclamation in October, at the beginning of October, for Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
We will. And first off, we just recently were up to visit the treatment center on the five-year anniversary. I was shocked at the amount of people that, I mean, it touches each and every one of our lives, the people that, good friends that you don't even necessarily know. And you guys just do a great job. The facility is top-notch. Just keep doing what you're doing. We will most surely do a proclamation. Kristen's already putting it in her calendar. And we can have some discussion on what we can do to our town. Counselors, any suggestions or comments? We will come up with something.
Okay. We would love that. Thank you very much.
Great job. Keep up the good work, and by all means, we'll be there to support you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Take care.
Your honor.
Councilman Windor.
Could that little gazebo be lit up pink, our brand-new little gazebo on the corner? I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there. I don't know what's available, but.
Chad Banks might be able to answer that, but he's not here. I'll ask him about that. I see that it just went up. I don't know much about that. That might be a good idea. We'll find something. It might be me running around painted pink, but you will do something.
Oh, I will see that.
Okay. Item number three, presentations. We have the Wyoming Horse Racing. Eugene Joyce.
Candy Pendleton for backup assistance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counselors. My name's Eugene Joyce. My company is Wyoming Horse Racing LLC. We are currently racing at the Sweetwater Banks Complex. In fact, this weekend, the 7th and 8th, is our last weekend of horse racing and last weekend of horse racing here in the state for 2019. I invite you all to come out, by the way. We can get you some free passes. The beer's cold, the hot dogs are hot. And I'm here tonight to just let you know about an economic miracle that's occurred. And it started here in Rock Springs. It started nine years ago. Horse racing was dead in the state. The Permutual Commission was down to its last $30,000 in the bank. There hadn't been a live horse racing over a year and a half. And I had a plan, a dream, and I just needed a racetrack. And Larry Lloyd helped me get that racetrack and allowed me to race just four days in 2011. And a lot of things have transpired since then. We got up and off the ground, but after a couple of years, we realized the revenue from simulcasting was not enough to grow the industry back to when it used to have over 30 days of live horse racing. We went to, actually in April of 2012, I met with the governor. In the room with me that day was Senator John Schiffer. And we told him about an idea. Kentucky had just passed legislation to help the racetracks there with a product called Historical Horse Racing. Now, you might not think that a state like Kentucky needed any kind of help, but they were surrounded by states that had racetracks that had casinos, and horses were leaving the state. And so this was something that our industry recognized could help here in Wyoming. Now, in that room that day, the city of Rock Springs had a couple of guardian angels. You guys weren't present, but you had the governor, you had myself, you had John Schiffer. And in that discussion, the governor told us, the revenue that could be generated from this, the state really doesn't need. I'd like to see a direct revenue stream go to the cities and counties where this activity takes place. And so we worked our tails off. We got House Bill 25 passed. And in the past five and a half years, the city of Rock Springs has taken in $1.6 million into their accounts. In the next five years, I would project that the city of Rock Springs will take $3 million into their accounts. And the reason I bring this up is that I need help as a racetrack operator to make capital improvements into the racing facility. It is 40 years old, and it is not up to industry standards, not up to safety standards. Creature comforts are wanting there. We have a jock's room that does not have, it's a trailer, doesn't have running water. The jockeys have to relieve themselves, you've port-a-potties. Now, these are guys that have an ambulance follow them around when they work. That's how dangerous their job is. Now, I've put up a lot of my money to improve the facility. I have over a million dollars' worth of track equipment to take care of the racing surface. I spent over $100,000 to import a safety rail from England on the inside rail. I fixed the patrol camera towers. I've got a million-dollar accident and disability policy for the jockeys, which is as good as you're going to get anywhere in the United States, whether you race at Churchill Downs or Santa Anita or Belmont Park. Now, I say these things not to impress you, but to impress upon you. I'm dedicated, I'm erstwhile in putting the best product we can out there. We have grown the number of race states. We have grown the purse money available for the horsemen to come and run for. We have horsemen coming from Canada, California, Texas, Oklahoma, Colorado, a bunch of states, Utah, that come here and race. But as we've improved certain things, there's certain things that are found wanting. And I mention these things because we want to move forward. I'm just a tenant, and I don't mind fixing the roof. I don't mind doing some plumbing, but I can't spend money on capital improvements on land that I that I don't own. And so, what I'm hoping to accomplish tonight, and again, I'm not pointing any fingers of blame, I'm the one to blame for not tooting my own horn. My wife gets after me all the time. She tells me, "You don't tell enough people what you've done." And I'm very proud of what we've done, what we've accomplished here. We have people moving into the state, buying property to partake in the Wyoming bred horse racing program that is now putting out there $3 million a year to motivate and get people to breed Wyoming horses. So, we're very proud of that, but we need some help. And I'm hoping that you will recognize that this money that comes to you comes through live horse racing. Without live horse racing, you don't have historic horse racing. And while technically, legally, it might be true that if there was no horse racing at Sweetwater Downs, historical horse racing would continue. However, I would tell you that me personally, my business cannot run our 16 days of live horse racing without multiple facilities. And the reason that is, and that, you know, the 20 years between the time racing stopped here and I came back, other plans were made. We've got tractor pulls, we've got rodeos, we've got the county fair, we've got the high school rodeo. And there's not the requisite window of time for me to run. So, without Sweetwater Downs, it puts my business in jeopardy. And just to put it in perspective, having two competitors in your city is a good thing. It forces me to spend more money on advertising, marketing, better machines, better employees, better customer service. It grows the overall market. If there was just one of us here, I don't think you would have seen the growth rate over 30% over the last three, four years that you've seen in the revenue that is accumulated here to the city of Rock Springs. And I should note, too, that if I cannot, again, run here, it puts my business in jeopardy. Our historic horse racing terminals at Bombers, of the money you've garnered last year, was 65% of it. And so, I look to the future. I look to a revenue stream of $3 million coming into the city of Rock Springs that you didn't have to pass a tax on your people. It doesn't come from nowhere. It comes from my hard work in industry, my company, working our tails off to grow that revenue for you. And we're happy to do it. We're happy to do it. But to those that much is given, much is required. And part of the ask tonight is to consider, when the Sweetwater Events Complex comes and says to you that we've got these improvements we'd like to do that relate to horse racing. Now, all of them, I would tell you, have application beyond the four weeks that we're in town and we're horse racing. They have applications and uses 52 weeks out of the year for all the events that go on out there. And so, any business has to take a percentage of their profits and put it back into improving it. And so, with that, like I said, I just hope you recognize what's happened. Rock Springs is near and dear to me. You got me started, you got me on my feet and started me down this crazy road. It's been a success story that, not only for Rock Springs, not only for Sweetwater County, but for the entire horse racing industry has recognized that fact. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to take any questions from the council.
If I could first, and thanks, Eugene. We're appreciative of that. Hope that we can continue. What percentage goes back to the county or the city?
So, of the gross handle, the gross amount of money wagered, the amount of money that is paid back is calculated at 1% of the gross handle, with a half percent going to the city where the activity is and a half percent going to the county. Now, I would tell you that when I pay the state, I pay them on a weekly basis. And part of that is money that goes to you. The money that comes out of my gross revenue that goes back to the cities and counties is roughly 12%. I pay about 25% to the state out of my gross revenues and about half goes back to the cities and counties.
And then, it seems like you're here tonight, you're asking for help on improvements. What exactly are you needing help on?
Well, there's a couple of things that come to mind. Number one is, we need a race office. We're operating in a pig barn right now. We need a jock's room. We need to move the finish line and in order to do that, we need to move the steward stands, which is that little shack on top of the grandstand. And right now, that is, it's about the size of three phone booths and we have six people in there. We have three stewards, we have a track announcer, we have a photo finish person, we have a camera, a pan cop cam operator up there. That needs, in my humble opinion, needs to come off the roof, be lowered underneath the grandstand. And the finish line needs to be moved back 50 yards. But in order to move the finish line, we need to move that stand because that's where the photo finish is. And I mentioned the insurance policy for the jockeys. We've had several accidents in that turn. Because of all the racetracks I've operated, and I've operated not only Wyoming Downs in Evanston, but Lone Star Park in Dallas, Turf Paradise in Phoenix and Remington Park in Oklahoma City, it is the shortest distance between the finish line and the turn where the horses have to pull up. And so, by giving them even an extra 50 yards allows the riders to have enough time to pull up. And so, again, that's a safety concern that I've had for several years. But, you know, all of these things take money. You know, the barns that they just constructed are great for high school rodeo kids, but they're not proper horse barns. Horse barns have enough room between them to allow for a walker, an automated walker for the horses to cool out on. And again, that's, you know, the barns is something that is not an immediate concern. It's probably a long-term thing that'll help us sell it. You know, I started out in advertising sales and what I learned was, good advertising can really help a good product, you know? But good advertising will kill bad product. And again, the deficiencies in the facility, when we bring horsemen from out of state, it's kind of a negative, it's kind of a detriment. But some of the safety things, like, you know, moving the finish line is right at the top of the list, getting a jock's room. And again, in my mind, it'd be a multifunctional building that we could operate as also a race office, you could operate as a media center when you have the high school rodeo here. And again, but in order to do this, you have to plan out. And so, as we look at the revenue streams, and again, I look at me operating my horse racing, the live horse racing, at Sweetwater Downs as a public-private partnership and a very successful one. But my part in it, the way I see my part in it, is not to improve the property out there. My part in it is to grow the business and to grow the revenue for the stakeholders, which the city of Rock Springs is one. That's where my money is best spent, in my mind. So, with the greatest return for all of the stakeholders.
Counselor Rob, you going to fix this?
If I could, I think part of what's being asked from both the city and county, a portion of the money that we get from this horse racing revenue we get, that we agree to put some of that back into the events complex to make improvements that are requested. Because without that horse racing, we wouldn't have received that 1.6 million. The county is not the same. So, the request is going to be, and I think the county is somewhat on board with what they've talked, that a certain percentage of that revenue go back to the complex specifically for horse racing, allow us to continue racing, continue generating revenue. There is, it is an old facility and there are things that need to be adjusted. Thank you.
That's what I'm, yeah. Councilman Smollett?
Uh, councilman. Is there a dollar amount for the upgrades?
Well, I've been working with Candy and Larry on some of these things and to get some bids on that. What I think we would like to see from the city and the county is an agreed-upon percentage to come back to the facility. Now, again, you know, I put money up every year to lease the facility, but in my mind, you know, a significant amount of money on a yearly basis, and Larry might have other ideas, but even if it was something like $300,000, you know, over five years, that's 1.5 million. I mean, you can do a lot of things with that money. And yet, I don't think that, and again, if it's a percentage, if business goes down, your percentage goes down. If I can grow this pie, then, you know, that number will go up. With that said, you know, it's, there's, right now, we have maybe a finite number of things that need immediate attention, but as we go on, like I mentioned before, the barns, that's something that's, you know, that's a five or 10-year project, probably. So, I mean, if Candy wants to add anything, but I think it's a percentage is what we would like to see.
Thanks. I'm Candy Pendleton from the Events Complex. That is exactly what we were talking about. We've been speaking with Eugene about, we have met with an engineering firm here in town to start getting some prices. Part of what Eugene's talking about on moving that stand on the top requires some reengineering of that structure itself. For those of you who've been out to the grandstands, you know that has metal pillars that hold up the front of that bleacher and there are extra pillars in there that hold that system up on the front. So, it's not a small project to move the finish line 50 yards. So, we've met with an engineering firm. We're waiting for some proposals back to them, but we have a fairly long list of substantial costs and no real way to fund that. So, Larry and Eugene met with Sweetwater County Commission on August 6th. They have tentatively agreed to the same type of idea and the next step is Green River City Council. Eugene has just opened a facility in Green River, so we thought if we could get all three of those entities that are sort of getting some of that money back from horse racing themselves to put money back into that facility, that may be a way to fund some of those things. The Events Complex, any of the horse racing facilities that host these events unfortunately aren't included in any of that return. So, that was the idea.
Any other questions, counsel?
If I could.
Councilman Smollett?
I wear kind of two hats being on the Events Complex Board and City Council, but that, I think, knowing councils, the hard part is, okay, blank check. Now, that's where the hard, the cost are going to have to come in. What are we looking at, long-term projects? That's it, I'll still. I do think, any, not having the other part.
Is there an option to form some sort of committee with somebody off of Rock Springs City Council, Sweetwater County, the Green River City Council, and including Eugene and somebody from the complex?
We have about 73 committees.
Like a 10-minute meeting? I just didn't know if there was something that we could all sort of sit down and agree on where that would start and if there was a certain time period. So, Eugene had mentioned an amount for five years. We could sit down and say, okay, here's what it would cost, once we have that information back from the engineers and then go backwards from there.
Yeah, I think Candy, if I could, it'd probably help us, even without the committee, is have you get those costs together and come back to the city council and give us an idea of what type of expenses. Because when you're saying percentage, you're also saying, you know, how long is this percentage going to stay on? You know, a lot of discussions on many tax things, you know, 17 years, you know, five years. So, in order to make a good decision amongst the group, I think it'd be good to have some costs. And I'm not quite sure, any other, some idea of what we're looking at.
We should have a proposal back from the engineers, I would guess sometime this week. And then, once we can proceed with that, we should be able to get some costs pretty rapidly. So, try to get that back to you right away.
Would it behoove you, just thinking about that, giving it out there, the finish line, instead of moving it, just building a new one? I mean, there's, I know how engineering works and with all that red iron and everything else, that's, half your costs are going to be in removing.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, councillors, yeah, that would be my preference. I mean, if you saw this thing up on the top of it, you're wondering how it even stays up there.
I've been up there. I wonder if it'll stay up there.
No, yeah, it's, it pucker's you up when you have to walk up in there. You know, and again, my experience with, you know, big events, when I was at Lone Star, we had the Breeders' Cup there. In fact, when we were building the facility, we initially funded it by selling 24 luxury suites at the top of the grandstand. And the demand was so high, we had to add another level for that. And you could have priced it anything you wanted. And so, by lowering it under the grandstand, and again, I mentioned this to Larry, I said, Larry, you should get a bid to do it all the way across because when the high school rodeo comes to town and daddy and mommy flying in the private jet for that, to watch that kid, you can charge whatever you want for it. And it'd also be great viewing for, you know, the rodeo events and what have you, but I think you could generate some serious revenue at the high school rodeo with that. Just a thought. But I think you have to move it. You definitely have to get it off the roof and get it more stable, get it underneath the grandstand roof and you get a better sightline. Right now, the trouble we have with that, you are so high up that you cannot see the outside 50, well, the outside 20, 25 feet of the racetrack. And as a track announcer and as a steward, now you're relying on video to see that. You can't see it because it's so steep and it's right below you, so.
I could see your point. I would suggest in the design, maybe putting a shield on the west side of the stands, too, for those 90 mile an hour winds that come up and chase everybody away.
That's on the list, although the engineers told us that's quite the feat, so we'll see how that turns out.
Well, I would like to say, we know what your request is. It'd be helpful if maybe you could make a return trip and have some discussion on what we actually see.
Your honor?
Councilman Wender?
I have a quick question. The jockey lockers, where out there is that going to be built? I'm just thinking, it's kind of busy out there.
So, right now, they're in that trailer that's in the parking lot. I'm sure you guys have all seen it. You probably haven't noticed it too much, but Western Wyoming Community College put in a, like an office trailer in the parking lot area that we use for our media trailer for national high school. It's been there for years. It's not in great shape at all. That's where the jocks are getting ready right now. So, the idea is actually that you could possibly put something behind where that east bleachers, the bleachers that we received from East Junior High that are on the east side of our regular grandstands, there's a pretty decent-sized space back behind there. The idea would be possibly that we could put something in there that could be race office and jock's room.
Couldn't you just do something mobile that could be brought in and on a, you know, a large modular or whatever and self-contained for the races and then move it in storage when we weren't racing? Because you're limited for space when it comes to events like that.
Right, possibly. We've looked at all of those things, so I think those are what you're asking, which is, can we pin down what those prices are? And we can sure do that.
Any other comments, counsel? Well, we appreciate it and we appreciate the revenue stream and like to say that it continues to be successful. And by all means, I think this council's open for ideas on. If Candy doesn't have this fixed by the time you come back, I'm sure we'll have some discussion on how we can.
Candy has to deal with Larry, so keep that in mind.
We get to deal with Como if that makes you feel better.
I feel everyone's pain.
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councillors.
Eugene, thanks for coming. Appreciate your time. Thanks, Pete.
Sorry.
This is going to bring us to the public hearing section and we have one public hearing on an application for a new bar and grill liquor license. Um, this is gonna bring us to the public hearing section, and we have one public hearing on an application for a new bar and grill liquor license by A.B. Rock Springs Wyoming LLC, doing business as Applebee's Neighborhood Bar, Grill and Bar, located at twenty-four ninety-one Foothill Boulevard, of which will take action under a new business item number one. Is there anyone here tonight wishing to speak on this public hearing? Anyone? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing section and move right on to the petition section. There are no petitions listed on the agenda, but if there's anyone wishing to address the council on any issue whatsoever, this is your time to do so. If you would just state your name for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Tom James. I'm, uh, approaching you today as a private citizen, Tom James, not Senator Tom James. I have a flash drive here with some pictures on it for you. This is in regards to, uh, the vacant lot adjacent to my home on Blue Sage Way. Do I give this to anyone in particular?
We don't have a laptop set up for that, but if you could leave those with Mr. Council, that'd be good. I can get them distributed to the, uh, City Council.
Perfect. Uh, so, thank you for listening to me today. I appreciate it. Uh, so there's a vacant lot on Blue Sage Way that has been, uh, in the city's possession since April. And for the previous eleven years, the people in my neighborhood have been using it to park their campers and trailers and, and whatnot. So I'm here today to ask you if it would be possible, um, to either let me put in a bid for it or at least let us park our campers there. Right now, it's just sitting there, growing weeds and looking hideous, as you'll see by the pictures. Right now, winter's right around the corner and it's getting really late in the season, and we'd like to be able to do something with it. And I've spoken with my councilman, Zodi, about it, about our plans. We wanna go in there, level it out, make it look nice, gravel it, and bring it up to code. And I, if it does come to my possession, I do not plan on charging anyone in my neighborhood for its use at all in any way, shape, or form. I just wanna let my neighborhood use it like they have been for the past eleven years. I just wanna let them park their stuff there, and that's it. It'll just be for that. And I'll have them sign, um, paperwork saying that anything parked there will be kept in good working order. Everything will be legal, their tags will be up to date, and nothing will be worthy of being called on a nuisance or anything like that. And, yeah. If there's any questions, I'm, feel free.
Your honor?
Councilwoman Wonder?
Oh, go ahead, Rob. Go ahead. When I met with, um, that was one thing that we discussed was what would be parked there? And you did mention idled, up-to-date. We're not looking project cars that sit there and someone forces them to add a piece of RVs and boats that are using the place to park. So, anybody with an RV or a large trailer, it's hard to find place, places for those to park. And right now, in that neighborhood, most of them park right on the driveway, which does, can block. They're right there, somewhere coming out onto the sidewalk in that distance. They'll all be located in one area. Lots wide enough to accommodate. Talk about grating it off, talk about, uh, gravel. Having a nice place for, uh, things to park. And, and right now, like you said, it is dirt.
Dirt, weeds, debris, trash. Yeah, it's, it's pretty hideous looking. I mean, dress fried dress, all lined up, nice and neat, just the way it, it needs to be. I'm very meticulous about how it'll be, and I will hold people accountable to it. It'll, it'll be nice. It'll be an example. And feel free, anyone else, all these other vacant lots that you guys have sitting around the city, feel free to use it as an example.
Your honor?
Councilwoman Wonder?
I was just curious, approximately, how many RVs, boats do you think will be in there? And will it be large enough to accommodate all the residents on Blue Sage?
Oh, we, we have about eleven to twelve, uh, uh, trailers, and it's more than enough room. It's more than enough with probably room to spare.
About two hundred eight by six. Councilman Schmata?
I would want to opinion from our legal department, a bid process itself, when that have to be bid, bid by the citizens, open to all citizens.
By name, Councilor Schmata. The property would have to be by statute praised, have to be placed up into the public and, so, council.
So just to bring people up to speed, this is, uh, this is an issue around town. And Senator James, Tom James', uh, issue, I don't know how long we've been talking about this, maybe three months?
Since April, April.
Okay, so at first, um, you know, we're trying to make sense of individuals parking trailers on, on vacant pieces of land that the city is left in lieu of parkland, which becomes our issue. We're responsible for it, weed-infested, and, uh, by all means, doesn't make sense. As a matter of fact, I wanna make sure that that, that, uh, doesn't exist anymore. We have plenty of parks at this point, and we end up with these little parcels that make no sense. That being said, we had some discussion in staff meeting of those that you were in staff meeting about just, uh, going out, getting a appraisal, appraisal and, and putting these up for bid. And I, we explained to, um, Tom that they're, you know, being public property, it'd have to go out through the process. He was okay with that, to the point where we had further discussion and, um, no clear direction, being as there's many of these on what to go. So Tom offered getting an appraisal done by himself, uh, from, uh, from, uh, Evanston, I believe, at that point. And, uh, offering, uh, to save us the money on the appraisal and, and then putting it out to bid at that point. The zoning issue may become an issue, uh, because it's, it's a storage lot in the middle of a residential neighborhood. But it's my, of my opinion that we have many of these areas where individuals own RVs and they end up parked on the street or in a piece of land in lieu of the parkland that we end up giving citations for. And, uh, it becomes a problem, and I think it's a problem we do, we do need to address. And how we go about doing that is, for one, I think there's gonna have to be a change of, uh, the ordinance to allow a storage yard. But, and I can tell you, there's several on the council right now, the biggest concern is, once you open that gate, then it goes. The next thing you have, you have the old cars that are torn down and engines all over the place, and, and that's what we're trying to avoid.
Which is why I suggested you're more than welcome to point the blame at me. Use this guy as an example. Hey, that's your example right there. If it don't look like that, it's not acceptable.
So in that being said, um, in the event, uh, that we go down, two years down the road, and you've been on this piece of land, then you decide to move?
That's, that's why I've already come to the conclusion that if I do decide to ever move, which, given my particular situation, I'm not. I would make it where that's gonna be a condition of sale, that, that piece of land stays with that house. And it is not to be sold, and it is not to be changed. In any way, shape, or form, it is to be continued for that particular use. Now, it'll make it pretty much impossible to sell, but I'll just turn it into a rental then. So win-win for me.
And then how that would work if you had individuals, um, they would have to con- say, contact you personally to get your approval to, to park?
Which all the, uh, people on that street already, are already aware of this. I've already spoken with everyone, and they're fully on board.
So council, I'd open up for discussion, and, and what's your thoughts?
Your honor?
Councilman West?
The difficulty is, it does kinda open up the, the can of worms. Well, at this particular spot, it's kinda hidden, it's out of the view shit. You know, I know when I was on planning and zoning, there was an area behind Smith's there that, we've got several complaints of people parking, you know, ten, twenty campers down there that were driving by all the time. I've driven this area because I got a call from one of your neighbors, and, um, it's at least out of the way. So I don't know if you take it by a case-by-case basis, but I think it is gonna be a little complex, especially in the event that something does happen with a change of ownership or moving or whatever the case is. So, I mean, the other flip side of that is, the city isn't doing anything with them, and they're just collecting weeds, so.
Well, then, I would request that you guys need to come up and get it up to code, clean it up, because it's nasty-looking.
We went down this path years ago, uh, in dealing with, uh, weeds and, uh, issuing citations. And we took an inventory of all the, uh, lands that were out there, vacant lots and the like. And, uh, the city of Rock Springs is one of the biggest violators. Uh, we have lands and pieces of parcel, parcels that have been left to us that you're just not aware of until somebody brings it to your attention. And that being said, no one will bring this to anybody's attention, and it's that one neighbor that just doesn't like what's going on, and they're gonna, they're gonna make that call, and, and we're gonna have to deal with it. That's usually the process that takes place.
Right.
So I, I think this has been an ongoing, uh, an issue over many years that we need to, uh, we need to resolve. And I think Councilor West is ex- exactly correct in, in dealing with them on a case-by-case basis. Because there are parcels of land that are located next to a main arterial road that may be an entryway into your city. And do you necessarily want a bunch, a bunch of RVs parked, uh, in a vacant lot right there? At that point, I think you'd wanna develop, develop it into something more pleasant.
More of a stor- make the, that particular case into an actual storage where it's actually covered and closed off, so that way it's not an eyesore. You know, if they're gonna make it into a storage lot, make it look like one. You know, a case-by-case, like Mayor Como said, but, you know, it just depends on what the situation may be. Treat it as it is, type thing.
Councilman Zodi? And kinda, you know, it's been, it's brought up over precedent, but I, really in my mind, I, our land, I sell, sell. So it is a case-by-case kind of thing. But I don't know. As a thing, I totally. Argue that. Tell us, tell it, tell.
Uh, Councilman Alter?
Um, I think it kinda does, especially when someone bought two lots, regardless of the city's, right? So I, I really do care for, regardless if it's our property that we're selling, it's private property that's sold. There's already many places around town.
It, it, any?
And that's private, I mean, that's private sale, that's private property, talking about. Either it's different, there'd be private.
As I looked into this particular lot, um, and Paul, maybe you can answer this on map server, it lists no ownership. Is it? Not been transferred, what?
Your honor, it, just like any right-of-the-street, right-of-way route. It's part, it, it's considered actually a good.
Your honor, there's a T in the road that's pretty close to that, Jackson and Madison, and we've got the same problem. And every spring, I've got a little crew, and we go down there and clean it up, or I'll send work restitution. But it's the same situation, it's a piece of city property that just collects garbage and weeds, and people bring their tree limbs there, even though they're not supposed to, and pieces of concrete, and it's just a dumping ground.
That one is actually labeled City of Rock Springs. I don't get the other one.
What's funny is before this whole situation occurred, like when I first moved there, that piece was actually labeled open land. But then, but then after this whole situation occurred, that's when that open land label went away.
Your honor, when it was dedicated on the flat, it, it, uh, sold off as a parcel.
Correct.
Divided from the street. It would need its own thing.
Correct.
Because it's dedicated as part essentially of a plan, it's like, it's not its own parcel. It may be designated on the flat, it's open space, because it's to help park or whatever. But I think if you go through and actually want to sell that parcel, it'll have to have some bounds to, to parcel.
Correct.
And then you can reclaim this.
If, if I may? Check, here.
Mr. Beck?
I think, uh, council.
Yes, there's. Certain requirements for fencing, surfacing.
So then also, on the interstate side, which would be the easterly side, there's a twenty-foot drainage. So careful with that. On the southerly side, it's fifteen-foot utilities, and on the westerly side, five-foot utility. So basically, you'd have, couldn't consider any kind of closed storage. It'd be open yard storage, and have to maintain, um, the twenty-foot drain.
No one would be draining anything there at all. It wouldn't.
Well, we, what this drainage treatment does is drain that whole subdivision down to the south, it's the stormwater.
Okay, gotcha.
But, um, those are the restrictions on it, but Paul's right, it would need its own meat and bounds description, legal description, if you would, and, uh, be its own parcel in order to, to move forward with that.
My question, why do you speak so landy? It's for the park?
I just wanna give it back to my neighborhood.
Just being the good guy.
Yeah.
I, I think West has got it hit it on the nose. If we're gonna do this, we have the contract written up and drawn up by the city. And that, uh, we do it on a case-by-case basis, and one, we make sure that follow all the stipulations through legal.
I'll, I'll do whatever it takes. I just wanna, I just wanna make sure my neighborhood gets that place back.
I, I don't see a problem with a case-by-case basis. I know a lot of small areas that need, that the city owns, probably, and it's never done.
I would just, I would just remind you that basically the city would take bids on this, and, and we'd have an appraisal, so.
I'll still, I mean, the bids only, I mean, the appraisals only three hundred and fifty dollars.
So council, what's your pleasure?
Your honor, I have a suggestion that might, is there a way that the city, do some sort of cost leads to, to, to air pay property? Stay in the city. If they're willing to put.
Mr. Beck, what's your thoughts?
I believe that the statutes allow us to do all sorts of property the city owns. It's conceivable that it, like, it's all. But again, if the city's gonna do that, the city then at that point would be self-required to unprove, servicing, improve. Any of those a lot, not in order for us to, you know, it would essentially, same chip.
No, taxpayers aren't gonna pay for this. No, we'll pay for this. Taxpayers will not pay for improvements on something that me and my neighborhood will be using. No way.
Councilwoman Wonder?
Is this more like, are you thinking more like maybe adopta? I mean, there's, I know in other cities, there's neighborhoods where they will like adopt a park and. adopt a park and take care of it. I mean, I guess, I mean legally, we could handle it different, but then you guys would always be the ones to more or less just take care of it, right?
Or, yeah, we could take care of it, I mean, for the use of it to parker the camp, campers and trailers there for our street and our street only. We'll take care of it, make sure it's maintained and that kind of thing, but taxpayers in no way, shape or form will have any, any money in this whatsoever.
Your honor, it's a, I like the idea just for the fact that it does give control that if you do, you're not tied to it for one.
Right.
But then if, if it doesn't go like you think it's gonna go, it starts to become a junkyard. We have the ability to pull the lease, sell the property, do that. And so it does kind of hang that over your head or whoever's taking care of it to make sure that it's being taken care of. And would give neighbors, the neighborhood incentive to make sure it's taken care of because they know they could lose it if they're not following what's actually obligated.
Couldn't we just simple, simply have an MOU with the residents, Mr. James, basically said, this is how you'll operate, this is the term and these are the conditions? You're gonna make a call right now.
I, I, I think one of the issues that we have to deal with is the fact we open that parking lot, park in that whole city.
Yeah, there's the caveat.
Not just to that neighborhood, so it's difficult to parcel, parcel and say, okay, it's a city property.
But, but that being said, and each one of these residential neighborhoods were, were designed and parcels left within that certain subdivision for land in lieu of parkland, I think it would make sense that we would allow just those residents in that platted subdivision utilize that parcel of land that was left to the city during the filing of that final plan.
Mayor, if I might, if this was a PUD, I would feel better. This is a city. I, 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 again, we should devote some thought to this.
Okay.
Insurance issue.
Right.
So all sorts of considerations here. You sold the clean or you simply sell or if we are going to improve the property, perhaps. City Hall and handling spaces.
Right, all right. Maybe I'm, I'm thinking too simple here, but why is it any different than the train people where we lease it to someone to sell coffee? We're not allowing everybody, dog to go sell coffee in that location, we're allowing one person and one business. What's the difference between that and vacant land?
Well, the difference is that only one person can run a coffee shop. We opened that up to everybody in this. And decided to take that contract. And that doesn't mean anybody in the city can say move over coffee too. But so we're talking about vacant land, we could certainly enter into an agreement with some entity, do something with it. Uh, but and all these things would have to be taken into consideration. Like with, you know, the coffee place. Entity form, citizen.
Have it been to be just individual Tom James, sign the lease to with the City of Rock Springs?
Well, I, I did, that certainly is conceivable, but again, you have to start from the beginning, it's completely restaurant. It's for the purpose of parking, so. You know, who's gonna serve the city. How is it going to be served to, who is willing to answer about who? Yeah, so I'm not saying. Saying it's a little bit.
Your honor.
Counselor West.
Right now I see RVs parked, David has an aerial, so there are RVs or something.
That was from two thousand seventeen.
Is there anything there right now?
No, there's nothing, because this just happened in April, just four months ago.
So it's been all cleared out.
It's all cleared out now, because we got, uh, take, uh, five day notices posted on all the campers in April.
Cause I was just concerned, okay, in two thousand seventeen, when there were RVs and parked there, okay, if somebody would have got hurt then, who's responsible?
Us. Just to bring.
I'm not sh- I'm not sure what the, what it was like then.
Into the mix, Rick, this is a PUD. Johnson edition. It's a PUD.
Then it's very possible that we could potentially.
Right. Exactly. This was the discussion back when I was, we had that discussion of maybe creating a, an HOA and having some sort of an agreement with a couple of you, that, that would allow, um, I mean, we could draft it up the way we feel fit. Have the council, especially the council, councillors of that ward offer some language that made sure that it was maintained and the like. I, I just, I think there's a possibility and, and, and I agree with Rob, I'm not quite sure if, you know, you wanna, you wanna give up the right to own the land, but definitely there, there's a need, uh, in every one of these subdivisions for this particular issue. I can tell you, and I've watched it religiously, uh, as many of you have, um, we issue citation, citations to get these individuals to move their RVs, they go and park them on the street as long as they can, they put them on the driveway, which blocks the views. And we have kids going to school, catching a bus and, and they're hanging out into the street. I see fifth wheel hitches hanging over the sidewalk. Uh, it, it's not a good situation and, and I don't want to, I don't want to say that we're, you know, we're all the same here in Wyoming, but we like our boats, we like our RVs, we like our camp. And there's gotta be an easier way to fix this, plus, in my opinion, it serves two purposes there. It gets these units off of the street. And it, and it fixes the problem with a weed infested lot. Because Tom's right, that lot is ours and then he's here tonight showing his picture saying, well, if you're sure, then go fix it. And we've heard that time and time again, we spend numerous dollars out there for, for weed mitigation and litter and, and all that. I just think it serves two good purposes, but I do think, as Counselor West said, I think, um, in Charlotte, I believe it does have to be a case by case situation that you take a look. But it is a PUD and, and I, I think it's a good idea. Just my thoughts and, um, I would suggest, uh, councillors that we, we, um, allow Rick to move forward with a little bit of investigative work with maybe Mr. Kausic, Paul's familiar with this issue as well. We've been in email lists for the last several months, uh, as well as some of the councillors and, and bring us, uh, some options that we can consider if that makes sense to you. And by all means, we want to keep our city, um, clean and we want to keep it tidy and in order, uh, but we also want to do things that help serve the public and make good sense. And I think this makes good sense, if we could do it, retain, retain the ownership of the land and, and, and have it mitigated, why not? That's. If everybody's okay with that, I'll have staff do some research for us and bring some options and Tom will work with you as well.
I appreciate it. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Uh, still on positions, petition. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council on any issue? This is your time to do so. Very, I'm going to close the petition section and move on to the officers and staff reports. Uh, councillors, we have item number one, the financial report summary for July two thousand nineteen. And two, the animal control monthly report for July two thousand nineteen, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Counselor Tate. Thank you, Counselor Tate, we do have a motion to approve the officers and staff reports and place on file. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? It's gonna bring us to the council committee and board reports at this time, that we do not have any, is there anyone, uh, needing to report to the city council?
Your honor.
Counselor Shalata.
I'd like to find out what's going on with wetlands. Had some people come in and clean them. I went by there.
Oh, wetlands park, foothill.
Maybe Dave can give us an update, needs to be cleaned.
Uh, your honor, Counselor Shalata, I did speak with, uh, Mark Lyon a couple of weeks ago. And actually I talked to Mr. Kausic as well about some options there. Some of the struggle that we have those ponds or the detention ponds are so shallow and when temperatures rise, create so much of that algae, know that the guess it would be water reclamation or somebody came in, one of their sewer jet trucks su- excuse me, suctioned all, all of that out, I don't know, two or three weeks ago. And within a week, the moss and the algae back on top of that pond. As for the, the white bags that you see, all of that's coming.
Let me make a correction, that stuff does not come from Smith's, Walmart bags do not come from Walmart. It's the people getting those bags and going to the parking lot. I think sometimes, you know, it's a bad situation when Smith's donates flowers and Walmart does their job. But it, it's the residents that just have no respect and go put their groceries away. And then there goes the bags and that southwesterly wind and then, and then of course they have their name, uh, written all over them. So I'm sorry to interrupt you, I just had to get that off my chest.
We're just, we're making the, I guess, an assumption that most of that's coming from upwind and over the fence in that pond area. Um, we've done some work in that pond last year to get, you know, just labor intensive work on, on little paddle boats, trying to push that, you know, that moss off there and whatnot. Um, in the end, I think we're, you know, we're fighting a little battle because those
The shallow.
areas are only about two feet deep. Um, we struggle with algae and dog, seven. So until you get about ten or twelve feet deep and you filter out some of the light opportunity for that moss and whatnot to grow, I, I think we're fighting battle, um, I don't know what the answer is to that pond. Talked with Paul a little bit a few weeks ago and we discussed, can we divert something, you know, divert the water all the way through? Uh, do something. We've got it in just about every one of those ponds. Even that holding detention pond above the park area. You've ever looked over in there? Nasty is the only word I can come up with, it's just, it's, it's not good. But we need something more than what parks and recreation in terms of, you know, effective way to, to remove, you know, the kind of algae that you see in the moss, um, you know, some of that. And I, I can only assume that's what you're talking about when you talk about the wetlands. Yeah, it's, we just, it's, it's beyond us to figure out how we.
No, you need circulation.
Assistantly, you know, um, yeah.
What about those area, aerators that they float in the pond that would, does that help? Paul, you might know, I don't know, I know they use it in the sewer lagoons and ponds.
I, I could address that as well, because Mark Lyon and I have discussed that as well and we talked about, okay, do we, excuse me, do we do what Dog Park Pond has, which is circulating water in a fountain shape, dropping it back in. And I think what we're gonna do is try some subsurface aeration, um, where we just put, you know, airlines underneath the water to actually, you know, increase the oxygen, not that way. So it's not for lack of several attempts to do that. The other problem we have is we put in, um, we put in aquatic herbicides that, you know, hopefully do, you know, some good there. If and when we get water that moves through the detention pond like it's intended, you know, um, holding water and moving water through, anytime we get a flush or a rain or whatever, all that aquatic herbicide that's in there essentially moves through that system park and, and then you've got fresh water in there that's not treated with herbicide and you're back to square one, so.
Do we have the, the option to add water? I can't remember when we built this park. It, it's just detention basin water, right? It's just collection, stagnant.
Yeah, it's, it's actually groundwater.
Groundwater.
The ponds are dug. So water sitting in there.
It's sitting there.
Um, and then when we get a storm, sort of storm, it's actually detention basin very top near the house.
Mm-hmm.
That's where it's being discharged. Um, but when there is any event stagnant ground.
Which realistically, that's, that's what the plan was back in the day, was to build, uh, we had contractors wanted to build on that piece of ground and, and the soil was so contaminated, that's the drainage. Uh, the idea was to build a wetlands park and a detention basin to alleviate the flooding we used to see down there. This is what we have, well, Counselor Shalata, I appreciate the heads up and we'll see what, what we can try to clean up the pond.
Your honor.
Counselor Savage.
Dave, what I'm seeing right now is it looks like somebody dumped cut grass in there, you know, their lawn, they just full, it's just full of cut grass. That's what I saw in some trash, I didn't see a lot of the, um, I looked at it yesterday or the day before. That's what it looked like. Somebody just dumped, you know, garbage bags of grass that cut from their lawn.
This just irks me. We spend a lot of time on citywide cleanup and stuff, but what would possess someone to go dump their grass cutting into? We have a lot of responsible people in this community and we do our best to keep it clean, but I'm gonna tell you, it's a challenge sometimes, um, with, um, some people that, uh, just take it upon themselves to go out in the countryside and dump litter or go to a park and dump grass cuttings and, and the like. We're supposed to all be in this together and, uh, it's a bit frustrating to constantly be working your tail off, trying to bring good things to this community and then taking a beating like that when you get there and find out what, uh, what's occurring. Uh, that's my rant for today, but we'll, we'll see what we, I'll discuss this with Mr. Lance.
Your honor.
Counselor West.
I would just, uh, follow up to our last conversation regarding the sixth scent and special meeting that was held, obviously. Your, uh, I guess liaison or appointed member will be having a, I guess, a phone in conversation with the outside, or I guess incorporated agencies here, uh, pretty soon, so just like, uh, any input from any of the council and or yourself as far as I believe the, the whole purpose was to kind of go back to the drawing board and prioritize the, our projects and wasn't sure if anyone had any input on that, uh, follow up from our last meeting.
Uh, Counselor West, that's a good, uh, good point from the meeting that we left last time. I think everybody was going back to the drawing board. We had been requested to, uh, sponsor two, three. Uh, has anybody had any time or consideration, what's your thoughts? Counselor Shalata.
Well, I, I thought about this, uh, for quite some time and I liked the, uh, original proposals from Mr. Kausic. And then I also, uh, knowing that we own the property on Jackson's and why wanted their request where we have swimming pool at three point five. And I think the original, uh, ours was with the, uh, capture building for the odor, the waste water treatment plant. And about fifteen million dollars in, in sewer, storm drains, it's like that. And the other one was, uh, I believe it was a three point five. Two. It's four. It's the only piece of property.
There's a college drive and a doer drive wide. There's a college drive and a doer drive whitening project? No?
No, that wasn't it. That wasn't it.
Oh, you're talking outside?
I'm talking, I think it's outside. Cause Y is on, on Jackson Street. Wish I had folded. There was one other project, but it came up to about where that, that whole proposal would have been. The airport, yes, thank you, Dave. Yeah, the airport, since we own that property too. Those, those two pieces of property, I think, should try to sponsor those, those needs. And then what Mr. Kausic came up with was twenty-one million dollars in possible needs for sewer and water line replacement, things like that. As far as the other outside agencies, I'm having a little difficulty with trying to get on board with what they're requesting at this point. Maybe somewhere in the future, but.
Councilor West, would it maybe be a good idea to, I know we have a lot of meetings and it's hunting season. And I, I, I got an Area Thirty Bull tag just so. But the bottom line is, I think we need to have some conversation here and move our list. I, I think our list is sensible. I think we've taken some time to, um, to make these considerations, but I think we really need to have some discussion and, and, um, and consider, uh, you know, what we're gonna move forward as, as our final list. And, uh, I know there are entities that would like to participate in that workshop, but, uh, maybe if we need more information, maybe we could scramble and have just a quick workshop and discuss what our final list is going to be, um, other than just throwing out comments and hoping that we're gonna hit a target. Uh, just my thoughts.
The meeting's a week from today, so, I mean, I still think that we're early in the process anyway, but obviously, we're way overboard as an entire group, not solely speaking for Rock Springs. But I would suspect someone's gonna cut back on some of their requests, so I'd just like to be a little better prepared for how everyone feels cause I didn't really get much of a vibe at the, the last meeting.
Well, and, and I have to agree and Councilman, uh, Zadi brought up a, a good point too. We had a discussion just today about, you know, our, our past history and if there were options, um, for other sources of funding, it could be used for some of these projects that just end up on a six penny tax list because it may be easier. And, and, and whether they, uh, those entities or ourselves even considered that. And, uh, my comments were, yeah, we, we seem to always do that. We, we've taken loans and we've, we've, uh, uh, received grants, uh, takes some legwork, it takes some work to get them done. Uh, we have a couple in right now, uh, that could have very well ended up on the six penny list, but we didn't take that avenue. And I, I think that needs to be considered as well. But we do have some outlying entities that, that wish to be sponsored projects and, um, some are needs, some are wants. But, um, I think we have to listen to, uh, all that information from everybody. And I think the best for our own list, other than be in a, in a meeting with all the other, uh, uh, cities and towns is to have our own workshop meeting and discuss what we want to see on that list, take a vote on it and have you move it forward on our behalf. Would be my thoughts if everybody's so okay with that. We don't have a lot of time, but, um, I think everybody needs to participate. And if you can't participate, at least, um, chime in and, and, um, let's, let's put together a list, uh, and vote on it and, um, weigh it in on what we think's important for those that we've heard from and, uh, what's good for this community and then what's logical for, for us to, um, to, to see is, uh, what, what is realistically necessary to tax our community. So, how about, um, uh, I'll throw out some dates, tomorrow we'll look at it. We'll set up a workshop if we could and we'll get a list finalized, um, hopefully priority.
Was really, I've been preaching quality lives, so, pardon me, didn't want to bring it up, I was just gonna surprise you all next week. We'll have the workshop and see where it goes. No, that's good, appreciate that.
Okay. We'll do that. Kristin, I'll get with you tomorrow, we'll throw out some dates, see what we can do to make everybody, uh, dates work for everybody. Um, any other council committee or board reports? Two or? Okay, we're going to, uh, move on to the correspondence. Um, that councilors, if you have time to take a look at the two items under correspondence, I'd entertain a motion to approve them and place on file.
So, move, your honor.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this is gonna bring us to the bills and claims, uh, welcome back, Bernice.
So, everybody can get paid again?
Item number one under bills and claims, we have the bills and claims for September third, two thousand nineteen.
Your honor, I move to approve the bills and claims for September third, twenty nineteen.
We do have a motion to approve the bills and claims for September third, two thousand nineteen, do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Abstained.
Let the record show, let's bring us to item number two, the salaries for August twenty-second, two thousand nineteen.
Your honor, I move to approve the salaries for August twenty-second, twenty nineteen.
We do have a motion to approve the salaries for August twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, this is gonna bring us to our new business items, councilors. Item number one is the request for a new bar and grill liquor license by A.B. Rock Springs Wyoming LLC doing business as Applebee's Neighborhood Grill and Bar located at twenty-four ninety-one Foothill Boulevard of Rock Springs, Wyoming. What pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman West?
Move to approve this request.
We do have a motion to approve this request, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Let the record show, no opposed. Item number two from the housing authority, request from the Rock Springs Housing Authority for permission to bid fire and extended coverage and boiler insurance coverage for the housing authority's public housing apartments and buildings. Councilman, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilwoman Windorf?
I move to approve this request.
We do have a motion to approve this request, is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show, item number three is the request from the police department for permission to bid six replacement vehicles. Councilman Halter? Do we have a motion to honor this request, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number four is a request from the Urban Renewal Agency for a temporary street closure of South Main Street for the Art Timber Art Fair on September fourteenth, two thousand nineteen from eight AM, five PM. And I would ask a question of Chief Checo, are these times accurate with what we have for the permit?
Your honor, yes, these are.
Okay. Okay, I know there was some question there, it sounded like that. It's been corrected. Uh, Councilman, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilwoman Windorf?
I move to approve this request from the URA.
We do have a motion to honor this request from the URA, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number five is the request from the Department of Engineering Operations and Public Services for permission to bid the twenty-twenty concrete replacement phase one project, councilors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman West?
Move to approve this request.
We do have a motion to approve this request, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number six, request from the Department of Engineering and Operations and Public Services for permission to fill a vacant water system operator, one position in the Water Operations Division, councilors, what's your pleasure? Councilman Halter? We do have a motion to approve this request, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And item number seven, the request for mega promotions for a malt beverage permit for the Mega Monster Trucks event on September fourteenth, two thousand nineteen from six PM to nine PM at the Sweetwater Events Comp, councilors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilwoman Windorf?
I move to approve that request.
We do have a motion to approve this request, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number eight, the request from Square State Brewing for a malt beverage permit for the Art Timber Event on September fourteenth, two thousand nineteen from noon to five PM on South Main Street. Councilors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman West?
Move to approve this request.
We do have a motion to honor this request, do we have a second?
Second.
We do have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
Let the record show, and item number nine, the request from Lou's Incorporated for a liquor catering permit for the Genesis Service Awards Event on September nineteenth, two thousand nineteen from four PM to midnight at the Bunning Hall. Councilors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilwoman Windorf?
I move to approve this request.
We do have a motion to honor this request, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, this moves us on to the resolution section of our agenda. Um, item number one, the resolution two thousand nineteen dash one twenty-eight.
A resolution accepting and approving an inter-local agreement justice assistance grant program award twenty nineteen between the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming and the county of Sweetwater, Wyoming, and authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, to execute said agreement on behalf of the city.
Councilors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman Halter? We do have a motion to approve resolution two thousand nineteen one twenty-eight, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, roll call.
Counselor Tate?
Yes.
Windorf?
Yes.
Halter?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Shalata?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Mary Como?
Yes. Item number two, resolution two thousand nineteen dash one twenty-nine.
A resolution formally, formally terminating a lease with Tracy Frisby and accepting and approving a lease with Anthony Hall and authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, to execute said lease on behalf of said city.
Councilors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor, I approve that resolution.
We do have a motion to approve resolution two thousand nineteen one twenty-nine, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, roll call.
Counselor Windorf?
Yes.
Halter?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Shalata?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Mary Como?
Yes. Item number three, resolution two thousand nineteen dash one three zero.
A resolution accepting and approving a personal services contract with Emergency Services Consulting International in the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the city of Rock Springs and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk of the city of Rock Springs to execute said contract on behalf of the city of Rock Springs.
Councilors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman Zadi?
I have a question, honestly. With this study, um, what are we hoping to gain from it, has this been done in the past, how long ago?
Mary Como, Councilman Zadi, I am not aware of any type of study. Team study. Valuate the service the fire department currently provides, try to determine how to close gaps. This study would value patient introduction. Help us, our insurance service organization, excuse me, insurance office, public protection class rating, and for long as I. The idea with this study, help us find the weak spots, what we term spots, so that we can improve our ISO rating and tires. Help lower insurance costs if Mary Como meets that. Eventually even one, does not necessarily. Though, probably, in fact, to point out cooperative efforts outside agents. It will allow us to maximize our resources. Provide better services, faster services, like cooperating with our, our neighbors. All in all, this will provide us with good, holistic, three hundred and sixty objectives. Rock Springs Fire Department. From our basic standard operating guidelines. Manner with employer apparatus, schedule. How we engage our civil service. How we recruit. This will be a good thing.
See any benefit from, say, a grant standpoint or from ISO and saying that they do have a plan? This is written, it's all we have a plan, plus we're right now, I guess, don't have it. Especially we don't really have a plan, it's just.
Counselor Zadi, that would be correct. At this point in time, we do not have any written down that we accurately raise gaps. Give us good footing, right? So, it's also my hope to help bridge that gap, apply for grants successfully.
Councilman Shalata?
Uh, you don't have people that with this type of background, this program in-house, am I correct in saying that?
Counselor Shalata, that is correct, not some.
Even with all the, the people that have gone to courses and things like that, they could not give you any of this information. We're going to have to help this consultant agency.
That is correct. We'll be finding information, send to them for evaluation. They will be having discussions to figure out what the plan, determine wants of the elected officials to the fire department.
I have one other question, yeah? Is this in the original request from the department budget?
Mary Como, uh, Counselor Shalata, yes, it was.
Thank you.
Your honor.
Uh, Councilman West?
Chief, it seems, I mean, consulting isn't cheap, but thirty-five thousand seems pretty extensive. And I've, I've obviously read through everything, but are you saying basically this is the only way that you guys will be given direction as far as how you can lower that ISO rating?
Mary Como, Counselor, Counselor West. As I'm sure Counselor Zadi can attest, the ISO office is a bit difficult. Although they provide a review of our fire protection class, they do not necessarily provide a clear path of recommendations. Have chased better ratings. Seems like at every turn, there's something that we the intent is to use the information from the study, the results that they provide us, figure out exactly where those gaps are and prove. And ultimately, although it is beneficial to the residents on their insurance policies, it's infinitely more beneficial in the personal pocket. That's where they should save guys.
So, let's say they come back and they say that, uh, you know, you're running three-man crews instead of four-man crews and obviously that would come as a, you know, a bigger personnel cost. Do you think that by doing such, savings on the ISO rating would, I guess, be a wash or do you think there would even be a savings if, for instance, that's something that comes out of that?
Again, the ISO rating, we know that as the rating gets better, that insurance costs decrease. Actually, the standard right now says that you should get a run at a three. In fact, our houses are three-person all the time, that's what the house staff. Much like the NFBA standards, these would also be recommendations the city would have to follow. It will come out in view, excuse me, plan, what their suggestions are. After that, it's up to governing body conversations, self, to figure out how to best implement recommendations, figure out how to get from point A to point B. This is not a, this will not automatically state, here is a set of brown pegs, so, by the way. This is not a, this will not automatically state, here is a set of brown pegs on, by the way, here's the brown holes. Show us where we are right now, give us some guidelines, inspections, occupation, based on past growth, based on current things happening in our environment. Give us those tools to decide what works best for us. Much like any other toolbox, it doesn't mean that we have to pull every tool out. You still get to choose correctly about what governing body.
Thanks, Chief. Thanks, Your Honor.
Jim, one of the items, any other questions? One of the items on here, I was, earlier had to do with conversations with our wage study, our negotiations with the, uh, the I A F F. How do you see this and and out? Is it, is it a full-on wage study? Is it a, taking a look at the national average? How, how does that happen?
Mary Como, would I anticipate that setting? Yeah. Man, this council. There are additional manpower requirements that are required. Have to define what those additional costs are. Don't did a full-on wage study, it's actually hard. Proposal? Costing down the road differently, locating fire station, changing apparatus soon. Taking that, figuring out how to move an apparatus from frontline service to something else proficient. Those, that's more in line with the study sets out. It will look at the collective, collective bargaining agreement, come back with some recommendations for things that they look at change. I don't like that. I
Does the thirty-four thousand, that phase one, or?
That's the
complete one clear on?
In fact, contracted prison. Thousand, not to exceed.
Honor?
Counselor Zadi?
Comments on the I S O again. Um, I don't think we'd see anything that would specifically state, okay, you four man crew, you're going to go to a three. Or, there's, there, it's, it's a complex system and how that works in the rating and how they, the matrix is used. Because they're a volunteer part, department, Screen River is a three. Um, and that, it, it also comes down to, depends on water supply, equipment, on training, um, on manpower, uh, and where your stations are located and response. And there's a whole lot of things that go into this. It is a complex grading system. Um, I think one thing that got us maybe in the past was our training was more EMS focused than fire. Or there's something, maybe we had more calls, so that kinda, there was something in there with the EMS response versus fire. And maybe it was our focus on training was more EMS and it was fire, not that we were lacking in fire training, but we were predominantly EMS time. So that kinda think us a little bit. And then there's a accumulation of different things that can affect our ratings.
Counselor Zadi, it is over the years, we tracked our training as of how we categorize. Three audits that I've seen, each time it's something. Guess the best thing I can say, keep doing it. Whether we choose to, this will give us that information to help us bridge that gap, I S O.
I guess those basically, they're going to audit us, they're not going to hold our so something like, or like this would help a lot, if, in providing a pathway.
Our, the I S O process is a lot like in a blacked out stadium, highly effective.
And from your knowledge, the City of Rock Springs has never initiated a master plan study?
To my knowledge, our current response model dates from the seventies. Fire station have all drawn up, mission on the economic, seventy operation, very late seventies. As we look forward, it's going to grow in different directions. This can be a tool to help us figure out where the economics lie.
I'm scared to think what your budget requests are going to be if we approve this. I, I, I think, you know, we've said this before, I we're kind of falling behind in some of our department's equipment. We know we've been cut, replacement, things like that. I've been willing on this for quite some time as well. And we don't have a plan forward, what's going to come of this, what it's going to mean, and can we do it? I mean, that's the other issue. Can we do it financially, uh, if we receive, uh, uh, answers back that clearly show, which we know are going to show? Mind you, because of our inability to, uh, keep up with, um, what we need. And I'd, I'd like to say that every one of these department heads could have a master plan and it's going to feel pretty much the same thing. Don't even start with Checo. He's already reading into, seeing if he wants to hire these people. But, uh, yeah, it's, it's, it's a tough deal. You, you have to have a roadmap to move forward, but you know, the roadmap's going to, uh, to bring some maybe not so good news that may be costly. Uh, and the more you put it off, most likely, uh, the more expensive and big of an issue.
Your Honor, pick a dead one. An item here that does look at second. Whether that building services, fashion, or they would state statute to file possibly, yeah.
Um, completion timeline?
When I spoke to them last, they didn't start a timeline.
Uh, Counselor Savage?
And, uh, Chief, why this company? What, what is it that piqued your interest with?
Emergency Services Consulting International. They are a company comprised of hired, are taken have experience, public variety of studies such as the second value processes in public. So, their experience. Their affiliate, their actually affiliate national association hired have part of the experience. Thank you.
Any other question? Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Counselor Zadi?
I'd move to approve the wet resolution.
One thirty?
Uh, two thousand
We do have a motion to approve resolution two thousand nineteen one thirty. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Counselor Halter?
Yes.
West?
No.
Savage?
Yes.
Shalata?
No.
Zadi?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Tate? Sir?
Yes.
Mary Como?
Not that it matters at this point, but I was reluctant to voting on, on this just because of the amount of money. But I can see the value that this might add. Thirty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars is is a chunk that, depending on what direction it could go, could be valuable and may cost us more money. I believe, uh, the council spoke, um, I think out of morbid curiosity to see what comes from this study, I'm going to support this. Yes.
Your Honor?
Counselor Zadi?
If I could, I know there, there's potential this is going to cost us more money. And probably, but it's still our decision on what we want to do and how we move forward. But at least we know, we could go on not knowing and just go on how we're going and hope for the best. Or we could actually see a path forward and then choose whether or not to work towards that path. Uh, emergency services, we know it's thirty-four thousand dollars, but that is the primary function of the government, is to provide those services. So, at this point.
I, uh, I would agree, and I can tell you what has changed my mind and actually shocking until this meeting, I guess, wondering how many reports and studies we do that tell us what we need to do and we put on the shelf we never can do. And I believe I had that discussion with Counselor West earlier. And, uh, it's shocking to me that the City of Rock Springs has never undertaken a study to see where we are, what's needed, what we're doing good, what we're doing bad in the fire department. And that's basically what's, which led me to see what comes of this. And like Counselor Zadi said, we'll make that decision when it comes, but I curious to see where this, where this goes. So I'm willing to, uh, support spending the money. Counselor Savage?
I think, I, I think I, I was a no vote, but then I'm intrigued by the possibility of grant opportunities because I, I really think that there are those out there that we haven't, that we're not aware of yet. So I am interested to see, I'd like to see a focus on.
Yeah. Grant dollars are, uh, extremely critical in a time when the revenues are down. That we have to do our best to try to secure what we can. Uh, in, in Chief Wamsley's, uh, 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 support, he is constantly sending information in search of grant, uh, opportunity, wherever it may, whether it's fire department or not, and I appreciate that. We do have staff on board that, um, uh, are constantly looking to, uh, find ways to find grant dollars available for when it makes sense. And, um, trying to do our best to secure those grants, so that changed my mind, but, uh, let's see where this goes.
Your Honor, if I could just add to that, I, I applaud you, Chief, for looking to the future. I was a little bit on the fence with it as well. Um, that is my fear, that we're going to pay for something and it's going to come back that requires a bunch of staffing changes and things that we can't afford. And it's just going to sit there. So, that was my fear and voted no, but, um, it's not personal. I applaud you for looking at the future, so.
Your Honor? Counselor Halter?
Yes, I'll throw in my two cents on this. On public safety side, if they do a great job, great job with what they're getting. This is just a set of a box for them to decide how they need to board, um, if we're doing something wrong, that'll also catch that. I, I don't look at this as a potential for spending. See this as better as far as fire protection. So, um, like, like Bill said, time comes, dollar amount at that point, but this is definitely a step forward. I know the leadership up here in fire department will execute the plan as best as they
Appreciate that. Counselor Halter? And, um, believe that it's going to bring us to resolution two thousand nineteen one thirty-one.
A resolution accepting and approving an updated pay grade for the position of city planner to pay grade sixty-six for the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Counselor West?
I move to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash one thirty-one.
Um, we do have a motion to approve resolution two thousand nineteen one thirty-one. Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Counselor West?
Yes.
Savage?
No.
Shalata?
No.
Zadi?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Winndorf?
Yes.
Halter?
Yes.
Mary Como?
Yes. And I appreciate the committee for taking the time out of your day to sit down and, um, with myself and Mr. Kausic to go through the deals, details of this and see if we can, um, uh, be successful in our quest. Item number five, resolution two thousand nineteen one thirty-two.
A resolution accepting and approving a revised job description for the position of planning technician, revising the duties and responsibilities and changing the job title to senior administrative planning technician at pay grade forty-nine for the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming.
Um, Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor, to approve resolution.
We do have a motion to approve two thousand nineteen one thirty-two. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Counselor Savage?
No.
Shalata?
No.
Zadi?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Winndorf?
Yes.
Halter?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Mary Como?
Yes. And item number six, a resolution accepting, oops, maybe I'll just let you, two thousand nineteen one thirty-three.
Thank you. Uh, resolution accepting and approving a contract with R and D sweeping and asphalt ma- maintenance L C in the amount of forty-nine thousand, one twenty-five, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty cents, and authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor, Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk to execute said contract on behalf of the City of Rock Springs.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Counselor Winndorf?
I move to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash one thirty-three.
We do have a motion to approve two thousand nineteen one thirty-three. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's called. Roll call.
Counselor Shalata?
Yes.
Zadi?
Upstate.
Demus?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Winndorf?
Yes.
Halter?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Mary Como?
Yes. Counselors, with no further business, come before the city council. This meeting is done.